Good evening, everyone. This evening's Select Board meeting is being convened with the following notation. On July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Accordingly, all votes will be taken by roll call. At this time, I'd like to invite the members of the Select Board to introduce themselves, starting with Vice Chairman Zulus.
Hi, I'm Mike Zulus.
Good evening, Richard Wells, Secretary.
Hi, Roxanne Musto, Member.
And I'm Arthur Doyle, your Chair for this year. And joining us at a later point in the meeting will be Member Erin Bradley. With introductions, could you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a public comment. And under public comment, we provide an opportunity for fifteen minutes in the beginning of the meeting. For any citizen who wishes to speak, we just ask that they identify themselves after they're recognized by name and address. Each speaker would have up to three minutes' time for their comments. So at this time, I will look for any hands among the attendees and recognize them accordingly. Mr. Dave Shay, you are recognized. Could you promote Mr. Shay, please? Mr. Shay, welcome. You are muted.
I think you can hear me. I wanted to comment about the May, the October's last meeting. Someone were to say to me, there would be a joint meeting between two boards in this town. And I saw this and I heard this, that someone would infer or reference imply that there's three members of the other board that, in my opinion, were racist or sexist. And then during that meeting, we got two texts going to two members of each respective board pulling out because they were gassed at the comments. And then moments later, this comment appeared on Facebook. I don't care how you spin it. We have three conservative ideologues on the planning board. And they, they're showing their race racism tonight. Said, our boards can't be white enough for them evidently. And it was said, this is about diversity and inclusion. Well, Walter Timothy was on, had a primary in September, the week before. And I wrote a comment, and Walter and I are close friends and family. These people refer to us as Walter and me as racist, sexist, a bigot, homophobic, and pretty other, other things. So I, I looked at this and I thought to myself, and I was involved in the April campaign, and I heard the same thing over some of the positions, what was going on, what I said. Frankly, I enjoyed watching people refer to me as this and other people. I don't think this is about inclusion or diversity. I think this is about ideal, ideal, ideology, political partisanship here, in which Walter and I, Meredith, Sean, Maggie, Maggie, don't agree with their ideology. We don't agree with it, we don't agree with the position. And when we had two elections in this town, both one in April and one in September, the voters spoke pretty overwhelmingly, and they rejected it too. There comes a point where you've got to call this out to say, and the person who made this comment was a, has been appointed by this board to a committee. It's one thing to say it on Facebook, but to come to imply it at this board, I think it's going to be called out. It's going to be called out, this has gone too far. There is some disagreements, and I can, Richard and I can attest to. Back in the good old day when Mary Fitzgerald, Charlie Winchester, Marvin Gordon, and others were around, there was fundamental disagreements. But there was never a question of legitimacy. And I think now we've gotten to the point of legitimacy. There is a disagreement in this town on its direction in the way it's going. And this lot of us, and I think with the votes of the town of voters, have said, we don't agree with it. But we've got to watch it when we infer people are racist, or sexist, or homophobic, particularly when you sit at this table. Words have consequences, and I thought what went on last week with one of the members' comments should have been called out, it should have been condemned. And I thought it was outrageous and out of line. And he didn't hurt Walt, Maggie, Meredith, Sean. You hurt the town, you hurt your legitimacy. And once that legitimacy is gone, and I think of Mary Fitzgerald, John Cronin, Charlie Winchester, Marvin Gordon, Joe Manning, our former Congressman Burke, they must be looking, Bob Oldfield, looking down and disagree, disbelieve. This isn't the Milton that we know. And I really hope people think about what happened last week and realize this can't happen again. That's all, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments, and thank you for being with us, Mr. Shay. Seeing no other hands raised. We will turn to our next quarter of business. Item number four, discussion, rededication ribbon-cutting ceremony of the East Milton Deck Project. Mr. Wells, can we turn to you, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. So, as you know, I had, I had had discussions primarily with the chamber and with East Milton neighbors a little bit about coming up with a date. As, as everyone knows, we are on the brink, I hope, of completion of the new Manning Street, Joe Manning Deck, East Milton Square. But I did attend the East Milton Neighbors General Meeting last night, their annual meeting. And their officers did ask me if perhaps we could wait and hold this off until the spring. And I went and looked at the, although it's soaking wet there today, they do make a point that, you know, the grassroots have had a little time to come in. And they would also like to, for the, for the rededication, and this is something that I know you advocated for as well, Mr. Chair, that like to present the two thousand and twenty-two Manning Award, Joe Manning Civic Awards at that ceremony as well. So if you could bear with me and give it, I'm thinking maybe late April, early May at the latest, and that we do it at that point involving the community ourselves and the Manning family.
Richard, have you had a chance, if I may ask, to convey that yet to the chamber's chair?
No, I, I have not, but I will do that tomorrow. Today was just a hectic day, and this happened last night. We didn't finish till ten o'clock.
Would you get back to us afterwards?
Yeah, yeah, I'll copy you on my communication to him.
Any questions for Mr. Wells on item number four? Seeing none, we'll turn to agenda item number five. Discussion, review of the application for a sign-free corridor, a sign-free corridors, plural, in the town of Milton, and we turn to Mr. Freitag.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, thank you, Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. Just quickly here, I know last week I, this matter was on the agenda, and it was deferred at my request. I'm asking, did it be deferred? One last time, I got new information this week that I think is, is helpful to the application which we're putting together. This application, just so you know, is, is considerable. It's probably between three and four hundred pages. It has a lot of information in it regarding the areas in Milton that we're going to ask to be protected from the installation of electric signs. It's potentially the first of its kind to ever be filed with Mass DOT. They tell me that they've never actually had an application for a sign-free corridor. It's, that is permitted under their regs, they've never actually had one filed. So we just wanted to make sure that we, we complete this application in its best possible form. And I need just a little bit more time to do that. I expect that I'll be back here at your next meeting, though, with a completed application for your, your final review.
Okay, and that next meeting will be October eighteen. Any questions on this, or Mr. Freitag, from any members of the board? Thank you, Mr. Freitag.
You're welcome.
Item number six. Discussion, approval lease with the Milton Arts Center for the East Milton Library located at three thirty-four H Hill Road for a term of ten years. And Ms. Musto, you will be recusing yourself?
I will, if someone could please let me know when to come back, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Roxanne, and Erin, you are with us now?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I am.
Welcome. Glad to have you with us, thank you. Mr. Milano, could we turn to you, please?
Sure. As we've been working on this lease with the Milton Arts Center, you know, we're pleased that the Milton Arts Center has accepted and the town and the Arts Center have agreed to terms on a ten-year lease. They have come into the office to sign the lease, so it is executed by the Arts Center and is ready for the board's signature pending approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Any questions of Mr. Milano?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the, the lease between the town and the Milton Arts Center for the East Milton Library located at three thirty-four H Hill Road for a term of ten years.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Thank you, it's nice to have this accomplished and gratitude to all involved on both sides of the negotiation and the finalization of this ten-year lease. We'll turn now to item number seven. A discussion on a request that the Select Board sponsor a warrant article to amend Chapter Two, Sections Seven and Eight of the general bylaws regarding town meeting motions to move the previous question. And I believe we have Jill Clark, who's the proponent of the article with us, so we can move her up, please, to a participant. And we've also invited Town Moderator Bob Hisst. So could we invite Mr. Hisst up as well, please?
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Welcome, Ms. Clark, and welcome, Mr. Hisst. Ms. Clark, the floor is yours to introduce your proposal.
Thank you so much, Chair Doyle, and thank you for having me to speak to, on this tonight. My name is Jill Clark, I'm a town meeting member in Precinct Four, I live at twenty-six Harold Street. And I come before you tonight to ask the Select Board to sponsor an amendment to the town bylaws. I have made a slight adjustment since the first time this was on your agenda. And so I'm no longer proposing any changes to chapter, to section eight, but actually proposing that we just eliminate section seven. And to speak a little bit to why I think this is a good idea, the, the effect of this change will be essentially to remove a special procedure that Milton has for moving the question and revert back to the procedures that are described in town meeting time. And what that is, is that when someone moves the question, it causes an immediate vote that requires a two-thirds majority to pass. And if it does pass, then debate ends immediately, and the main item on the warrant goes for a vote. My primary reason for suggesting this change to the bylaws is that in the town meeting members that I have had the privilege of participating in, it seems that many town meeting members think that this is already the way it works in Milton. I've witnessed many people attempt to move the question only to be told that it doesn't actually work that way in Milton and that we have a slightly different bylaw. And so I think that making this change will ensure that the bylaws actually have the effect that town meeting members think that they, they have. I also think that it will help ensure a balance between healthy debate, which is really important, and a key part of town meeting, a, as well as ensuring an efficient meeting. I, I think that's a balance that we can strike with this. And I, I don't in any way intend to introduce a change that ends discussion prematurely, but want to make sure that people have oppor, plenty of opportunity to speak, but also allow a way to take a sense of the entire group when, when, once we've had an opportunity to hear from many people rather than only hearing from a minority of people who speak frequently. The last time this came up before the Select Board, Moderator Hisst spoke a little bit to this, and I'm looking forward to hearing from him tonight. Nice to see you again, Bob, we just spent a lovely afternoon together recently. But just wanted to speak to some of the things that he raised previously. I know Bob had raised a concern that, that, that the change may cut off debate or discourage people from speaking. And given that this vote is a, requires a two-thirds majority, there really does have to be a super majority of people that are in favor of moving on. And so that, that should give plenty of opportunity for people to have the opportunity to continue to speak. Bob also, you know, raised the concern about just kind of the complexity and having additional rules and that in general, it's easier for moderators to have fewer rules rather than more. And this is the reason, reason for my amended proposal that we just eliminate section seven, which actually, actually gives Milton one fewer rule, makes it simpler, and makes everything more consistent with town meeting time. So those are my reasons for this proposal, and I would really appreciate the Select Board considering sponsoring this item for the warrant.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clark. Maybe a good approach would be to see if any of the members of the Select Board have questions for you, then turn to Mr. Hisst, do the same thing, and then see if there are any further comments that either one of you or both of you might like to make among, along with the Select Board. So any questions for Ms. Clark at this time, for many members of the Select Board, please? Ms. Bradley, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jill, I just wanted to mention, I, I didn't hear you say it, but I do know that you were working with some other town meeting members in town on this amendment. So I just wanted to make sure that that was known and, and correct out there. So, so you have had input from other people in town that are town meeting members and have been for quite some time.
Yeah, thank you, Erin. I absolutely have worked with and spoke with some other town meeting members. And it's through collaboration and working with them that we arrived at this kind of simpler solution of just eliminating section seven. So I, I really do appreciate the feedback that I've gotten from other town meeting members.
Thank you, any further questions, members of the Select Board? Seeing none. Mr. Hisst, Mr. Moderator, may we turn to you for your comments, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Doyle. I also wanted to acknowledge some work Jill is doing, helping us with electronic voting right now. She's on a subcommittee we formed. So I think it's, it's great that a new member comes to town and gets in town meeting and tries to help our, our processes get better. Yep, my thoughts on this are, having worked with a lot of the Mass Moderated Association, you know, most of the moderate, the town meetings in this, in the Commonwealth are open town meetings. And usually there's a small coterie that comes, but sometimes you get very large groups. They'll come in for a big school funding issue or something, and a thousand or thousands of people will show up. And so I think this sense of limiting debate is probably there, I would bet, in town meeting time because citizens who rarely speak in public, less so even in town meeting, would come to a town meeting. And they've come, they've made all this effort, they want to say their piece. And so it can probably be, you know, ripple about when hundreds of people could be speaking on a topic. And so at some point, it probably gets to be really repetitive, and they say, you know what? I think we've heard all the nuances, let's move on. I think in the representative town meeting, we're dealing with a different group. It's not that the speakers are professionals, but you have some longtime town meeting members. They're used to town meeting, they are comfortable speaking, they, they generally know the rules of how things happen. They, most speakers, and I track the data on this, speak in less than three minutes. So most people ask a thirty-second question and don't say anything. Those that speak, they speak for less than three minutes. And we also have the rule that limits to, to people speaking on any one, one topic, which limits the repetitiveness of continuing to come up. The last thing, I think, I think Zoom may have skewed our sense of things because it's really easy to click the raise hand button in Zoom during the COVID era. It's different to stand up, walk down to the mic at the high school, literally stand up and say your piece in front of your friends and neighbors. That means you've really got to have something important, and so I think that tends to limit the debate. So I'm not going to die on this hill, but my general sense is I prefer to let the members speak because they were elected, and each person there is representing, well, I think what the math is, each citizen represents two hundred and, well, they have eighty people or so. So if you know you're limiting one person from speaking, you're, you're cutting off the representation of another eighty. So my general sense is, let, when the room is done speaking, they'll sit down and be quiet. And often in person, you know, the moderator can read the room. I know Brian used to do that, I can do that in the high school. And you can get a, get a sense where things are done and move the question along. So that's my two senses, to let the town meeting members have their say, and we discuss the articles thoroughly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I will turn to the Select Board. Mr. Wells, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Bob, good evening, Jill. So we, I, I just want to be clear here. Bobby, you suggesting we should support this, and this should be a Select Board article, or?
I'm, I'm suggesting leave the rules in place because it doesn't stop debate.
Okay.
It slows, we have a rule that slows it down, but doesn't stop it.
Because my, I agree with you, like I, having been around here, I can't, I don't realize how long it is, but it's a long time. I think something of this, like, I remember when we, when we brought forward the consent agenda. I remember our thought was, you know, it would say, take between a third and half of the articles and put them on, and we all know that that's not the way it happens, that town meeting and the town meeting members of this community want to have their ability to speak. So it's not that I don't support it, I just, I want to have, let them see what they say about it. I don't know if it should be endorsed by us without their say-so, that's my one concern. But I'll, I'll hear what the other members think as well.
Ms. Bradley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a different opinion. I, I, I believe that this should go to town meeting, and the town meeting members should vote on how they want to have their meeting. I don't think it's fair for me to say to town meeting how they should utilize the rules. How town meeting members want to vote on this is completely and totally up to them. It's their meeting, and so therefore I'm supportive of this just to get to town meeting so that they can decide how they would like to run their own meeting. That's not, that's not for me to decide. So I'm supportive of this, this article. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Zulus, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Clark, and thank you, Bob. Bob, just to, just to clarify, other than is, is set forth in the bylaws, we generally follow town meeting time in the court, in running our town meetings. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, and, and amending our bylaws to eliminate this section seven would, would have us go, would, would have us follow town meeting on, on this score as well, is that right? Is that right?
That's right. Jill's right.
Okay. Okay. I, I want to thank Ms. Clark for all the work on this and for the other town meeting members that have participated. I agree with what Ms. Bradley said. I think it's, I think it's a, it's an issue that some town meeting members have raised. I think it deserves a hearing in front of the town meeting members. I think the, the select board can sponsor the article without taking a vote one way or the other to support it, but to put it in front of the town meeting members for their consideration. We can take a vote to support it if we wish, or we can just take a vote to put it on the warrant so that the town meeting members can have their say. So I'm supportive of the town meeting members having their say on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. May we go to Ms. Musto and then back to Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Ma, um, just moderator, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Doyle.
One hat is enough.
Yes, thank you very much. I have been a longtime town meeting member as well. I think the rules have worked pretty well, but I'm certainly willing to hear, you know, this other option. That being said, I feel that, first of all, I would like to have more information out there for people to look at to, like almost like a point, counterpoint kind of an argument that people can see. And maybe that's something we should put on our website and get some feedback on. When you're in town meeting, you are representative of many people in your area and you are the one that they've chosen to speak for them. And anything that sort of cuts off that debate, I'm a little troubled with because that's what we're there for and that's why we have representative town meeting. So I would like to have a little bit more information put out for people to see. And it doesn't mean that we necessarily have to sponsor an article. Citizens can always do an article as well. But I want more information out there so that the general public has some input into what that means and we can have some feedback from people instead of deciding right this second on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. And then follow up, if I may, Mr. Wells, for just a moment, go to Mr. Milano for a bit of refresher on the calendar for the December five warrant, just so that everybody knows what the schedule looks like, should there be a motion for putting this forward for consideration?
Sure that the warrant is scheduled to close on October 12th. And at the October 18th select board meeting, the select board will be finalizing the warrant and voting on the inclusion of the articles in the warrant on the 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think people understand, misunderstood what I said. I didn't say that I disagreed with it. My point is a, a culmination of what everyone has said is we know town meeting likes to have their say. I think anyone who's a town meeting knows that. I'm not sure if I'd be ready to support it as a select board article tonight. As to what Mr. Zulus said about letting it go forward and then taking a vote at a later time, post, you know, as we hear the debate in town meeting four, I'd definitely be more comfortable with that. I think it, I don't want to do anything that makes it seem, town meeting is a big body. I don't want to do anything that makes it seem like we're preempting their ability to discuss this before we even support it. So that's my, there's also the possibility too, am I correct, Mr. Wells? This could also be filed as a citizen's petition if it's filed by the twelfth. Am I correct? Am I correct on that, Bob? On Mr. His?
Yes, I think for a special, it needs 100 signatures. I'd have to check with a clerk, but I think it's 100. But yeah, the timing's still there if they get certified. Yep. It would go straight to the warrant committee if they follow process.
Okay. I mean, this is something that I'm very likely, pending on debate at town meeting, I think that perhaps this board could support and endorse. I just think that this just isn't the time to do it right now. But I, I'm more than happy with it, however it gets to the town meeting for to be discussed as, as the, Mr. Moderator said, let's let town meeting have their, have their rounds.
All right, just to follow up on that, Mr. Wells, going back to what Mr. Zulus said, it could be a, a two-step process, one of which would be whether the select board was to put it forward as a warrant article. Apart from whether or not the select board would have any endorsement of that article, leaving it nearby to the floor of town meeting to determine. Is that a correct interpretation? Michael?
Yes, Arthur. That, you know, what, what, I, I think the motion would be a, a motion to include the article on the warrant, not supporting it one way or the other, but just including it on the article for town meeting consideration. And I would say that in terms of timing, and I understand if people want to think about it more, but in terms of timing, if we had a vote to include it on the warrant now rather than on the 18th, that would allow the warrant committee to start looking at it and the bylaw committee to look at it. I, and I would suggest to Ms. Clark that she go to both of those bodies if we voted to include it on the warrant. Could she go out and get 100 signatures? Probably. But again, that, that might delay the process. And I, it seems to me it would be, given the work that Ms. Clark and other town meeting members have done on this, it would be, it would be a, a nice gesture for us to at least include it on the warrant so she, so the process can begin and town meeting can have their say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Did I see your hand, Ms. Musto?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it sounds like really there were two options though. It sounds like they could do it as a citizen's petition, which it sounds like they may have started that. It sounds like Ms. Clark has talked to a lot of town meeting members. So it sounds like that would be one way to go as well. So I was just wondering if Ms. Clark could weigh in on that as well?
Um, yeah, so I'm certainly aware that that's the other venue for doing it. I think, you know, to be honest, given the timing and I, and as the moderator brought up, it would require 100 signatures to get it on a special town meeting. And, and, you know, frankly, I, I think that special town, items on the warrant for special town meeting should be special and there isn't anything terribly time sensitive about this. And so, you know, possibly saving it for annual town meeting, you know, lowers the barrier for the number of signatures, gives us a little bit more time to run it past some of the other committees. And, you know, I think that would also be perfectly appropriate. But either, you know, I, I agree with the general sense here, which is that, you know, we should allow town meeting to have an opportunity to weigh in and, you know, I'm, I'm open to any mechanism for getting it to that point.
Mr. Zulus?
Just, just one thought on the, the mechanics here. We don't have a lot on the warrant for December currently, and I don't know how much we're going to have on the warrant for December. We're going to have a lot on the warrant in May. So we might get a better hearing for this issue at a, at a December town meeting. And again, if we can, if we can assist with the mechanics, i.e. just including in the warrant for that, it may, it may make, it may make things move along a little more expediently. I just, we're going to have a big warrant in May and we don't have one in December. So it may be a good time to, to talk about it.
That's a very fair point. Yeah, I did, I wasn't aware of that and thank you for that.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, do other people, I, I mean, I have not heard about it other than here. So I'm just wondering, did you reach out to all of the precincts? I'm just trying to get a sense of what this is, or ju, I'm just trying to get a little bit more sense of it because I haven't heard about it.
No, I've certainly talked to nowhere near 100 people. Let me put it that way. But, you know, as, as Bob mentioned, I'm relatively new to town and still, you know, getting to meet my fellow town meeting members and have raised it with those that I've had the opportunity to speak with.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Any further comment, Mr. His?
Just that Mr. Milano was kind of looking like a young Abe Lincoln from, kind of struck by it. But other than that, no, I think you've made a lot of good points.
Thank you both very, very much. What is the pleasure of the board at this time? Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
I saw Ms. Bradley first and I.
Oh, that's fine, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion for it to go to the warrant committee so it will be on the special town meeting articles. And I would like to follow what Vice Chair Zulus had said, and unfortunately I didn't write it down, Mike, so I might need some help with the wording. But just for us to support it moving forward, not that we're supporting it, not that we're taking a vote to support it, but support it moving forward in the process, I think is a good thing. I think that's why we have a warrant committee. Having served on it for five years, they have vetted many things that I didn't know about prior to them coming to the warrant committee. We had a, an article about enforcing people to move their trash cans back in a timely fashion. So I think that this is definitely something that the process has done in the past. And I don't have the right words, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. So if I could ask the vice chair to say what he said. I'm also extremely sick, so I'm not firing on all cylinders this evening, so I apologize.
I, I think if I may paraphrase what you were moving, Ms. Bradley, is to, to put the proposal on the warrant.
That's correct. I do want it on the warrant. Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So that is a motion, if I understand correctly. With the motion made, the chair will call for a second and then go to Mr. Wells. Is there a second to the motion on the floor?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. So Mr. Wells, you're recognized, sir?
So, Mr. Chair, I just, and I, I don't want to be a, a fortune teller here, but my gut feeling is that, and I, and I appreciate that maybe the December is lighter than annual town meeting, and I still think there's a strong possibility that we're going to be on Zoom in December, just the way COVID numbers are going as we're going into the fall. I see this going and having debate and getting sent back for discussion and then to be brought up at the, at the annual town meeting in May as many articles of this nature, I'd be more inclined to support Ms. Bradley's vote for the end, to do this for the annual town meeting and do it for special. To our former colleague, the wise Ms. Katie Conlon, who knew so much about scheduling and timing, I can hear her now saying, this is something that should go to the regular town meeting and not the special. So that's just my thought on this. I'd, I'd be more inclined to support this for the annual to committee than special.
Is, is that a friendly amendment that you're making?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Bradley, do you accept the friendly amendment offered by Mr. Wells?
Well, I understand what Richard is saying. The member has come, the, the town meeting member has come before us now. She has done some due diligence. She's worked with moderators, she's worked with other people in town. So no, I'm not going to accept that right now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any further comment by Mr. Wells? Your hand, okay, Mr. Zulus?
Well, well, I, I would just say, you know, having worked with Katie Conlon for several years, I, I'm not necess, I, I don't necessarily think that she would, she would suggest that this should go to the annual town meeting. I, I actually think she might weigh in favor of putting it on where there is less on the, on the article. But, but I guess we, I guess we just don't know. But, but that's, that's what I think she'd say.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
No, I just think this is for the annual town meeting, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
I'm going to say no, and I agree that it should be for the annual town meeting. I really have seen this myself and feel sort of cornered into voting for it tonight. So I say no for right now. I'd like to see more of it, but for the annual, we have more time to look at it.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. So the motion carries. Mr. Zulus?
Mr. Chair, I, I, just, just in terms of mechanics, I think the, I think what perhaps can go to the warrant committee and perhaps the bylaw committee immediately is just this piece of paper with the deleted section seven. But, but I think that Ms. Clark or maybe Mr. Milano could, could work with Mr. Freitag to put this in the form of the article, just the, just the form saying it's an article and be it resolved. The substance is here, but just in terms of form, we just want to have that, we just want to have that ironed out. But I think you can send on the substance to the warrant committee and the bylaw committee as is.
Ms. Musto, you are recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if Ms. Clark could please read the section so that people that are perhaps on could understand or to hear it for the first time? I'd be happy if she could do that, please.
Excuse me just a moment. Would it be helpful, Roxanne, if Lincoln put it up so that people can see it?
Yes. I have it here. I will bring it up in a.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll go to Ms. Bradley.
And will that?
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Will this also be posted somewhere so that people could see in the community just ahead of time? But will be debated?
That's what the warrant committee is for.
No, I understand that, Ms. Bradley. I'm talking about, you know, I think there might be some members that, for instance, are in town meeting that might be interested in just seeing what this proposal is, that's
But we can work on that with Mr. Milano. There may be a couple of approaches that could be followed. Could go on the site. Another possibility is if it's appropriate, maybe touchy bases with town clerk for this action by the select board to be shared with town meeting in advance, so.
I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Would that be all right with you, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Bradley, you're recognized?
Mr. Chair, I have a question then, because I know that many town meeting members don't know of the articles before they receive the, the warrant in the mail. So are we going to start notifying town meeting members of all things that the select board is taking on? Because I can tell you that there's many people that are town meeting members that have, that don't know the articles that are coming before them until they read the, the actual warrant. So I'm just curious if we're proposing to change that process now?
A comment by other members of the board? Ms. Musto?
My point would be just to get it out in a timely manner so people have time to really look at it and understand it and, you know, formulate opinion or comment for town meeting. So, you know, as soon as we can get it out, I think that's really appropriate and I hear what you're saying. So I will leave it up to town council to decide what the right process would be for that.
As, speaking of town council, Mr. Freitag, did I see you wanting to comment or was I mistaken?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Kevin Freitag, the Office of Town Council. I was just going to respond in the affirmative to Chair Zulus's request to draft the article language. That, that's an easy lift and I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley, Mr. Wells and Mr. Zulus, I think that was the order, Ms. Bradley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to be recognized?
Yes, thank you. I just, I really want to make it clear that, that I'm confused because it sounds like we're changing the way that we're doing things that the select board moves forward on. And I know that the process in the past had been that the select board would recommend something, it would then go to the warrant committee, they would have a public hearing where people could be heard if they wanted to. They would discuss it, they would determine the comment for it. They are the ones that are actually putting this forward. It's not, I mean, it comes from us, but it's their, their comment is what makes the decision on whether or not it should be accepted or not accepted. So I guess I'm just confused as to what method we are going to start using to inform, you know, the 280 or 300 or however many town meeting members we have, if that's going to be via email moving forward, or if it's going to be, if it's going to be something that we're going to snail mail out to the town meeting members to make them aware of, of things that are coming in the warrant. if it's going to be something that we're going to snail mail out to the town meeting members to make them aware of, of things that are coming in the warrant before they get there. And what cost that's going to be to the town, both manpower or person power and potentially a mailing.
And if that's electronic, then it diminishes the manpower, person power issues to a great extent. Do you have?
It would just be the clerk that would have to do it, so one more step for them.
Did you have a position that you wanted to take on this yourself?
I just, I, I think that the process has worked in the past regarding articles that come forward from, whether it's a citizen's petition or whether it's from the select board or the planning board or any other board. It goes through the warrant committee and then it goes out to town meeting members. I don't know that that process hasn't worked in the past. I can tell you that there's been very big articles that have come to town meeting members that they had no idea about before they, they received them, and they actually held nice little working groups in their precincts to, to discuss it with their, with their neighbors, so I just, I don't believe that it's another step that we need to add to the clerk or to anybody else. I think that, you know, the process that has worked for however long, dozens of years, decades, I don't know, has worked, so that's where I stand.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Zulus and then Mr. Wells. Mr. Zulus?
Sorry, just to correct, Mr. Frytag referred to me as the chair. I just wanted to correct that reference. And, and I think it's probably more than, more than decades, it's probably millennia that has been going on, so.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A little bit of history to the comments that have been made here. So for the process for disseminating two things, the responsibility for dissemination of the warrant only comes from our office, the select board office. It's, it's compiled, created and comes from our office, as Mr. Milano is about to find out. But to his benefit, thanks to one of our former employees, that is now, can be done, is done electronically and only people who need a handwritten or printed copy, other than those that are handed out at town meeting, there are certain locations, including our office, they contain it. And just for point of record for everyone, anything that we're putting on for the December special town meeting, our office, the select board office is severely understaffed right now. We have a brand new town administrator and one person working in that office. So I think we need to think about the work, the Yomans work that they're doing and that they're doing with one arm tied behind their back right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my final comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Any other fr, further comments before we move on to our next agenda item? Seeing none. Item eight follows this discussion very nicely. Discussion, special town meeting, Monday, December five, two thousand twenty-two, and potential articles. We have just identified one and we have two others on the agenda this evening. Mr. Milano, do you want to introduce those place?
Sure. Tim Zarwinski from the planning office is here to discuss the warrant article for the evening over the dump access road for access to the proposed project at seven twenty eight Randolph Ave. So I'll turn it over to him at this moment.
Thank you. Welcome, Mrs. Zarwinski.
Uh, th- thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm still, I'm still delighted by that young, ablinging comment from, from the moderator. That was a nice feather in Mr. Milano's cap. So, so thank you for having me on to talk about this, this article. If, if anyone in here has been following the public hearing for the seven twenty eight Randolph Ave forty B project, this may be familiar to you, but, but folks who haven't, just by way of background, seven twenty eight Randolph Ave is the, the, the final of the sort of bunch of forty B applications that we've gotten in the past eighteen months. It is a site that is on Randolph Ave, obviously, kind of between the dump access road that goes up to the new animal shelter site and sort of the DPW yard, that kind of area of Randolph Avenue, Route twenty-eight. It's a forty unit condo proposal. It proposes access to Randolph Ave via a shared driveway that the parcel shares with seven thirty-six and seven eighteen Randolph Ave. I may be having those addresses wrong, but there are three parcels that share a driveway that accesses Randolph Ave. Currently, there is a single family house on each of those parcels. And the project is proposing to demolish one of those houses on the seven twenty eight parcel and build a forty unit condo building. There have been numerous issues that we've worked through in the public hearings of this project. I think this batch of forty Bs that we've been working through, I think each panel of the Board of Appeals has worked very hard to address the, the physical impacts and the environmental impacts of these projects and to, you know, try to attempt to properly condition these, these approvals so that they're, they're minimally impactful to, to the neighborhoods while also again acknowledging the, the regional need for, for affordable housing, which is the purpose of forty B. Seven twenty eight Randolph Ave has been a really tricky one for a number of reasons. The topography of the site, the location of it on Randolph Ave, where it is, and the, the nature of the shared driveway have really caused a lot of issues for, for this project and the Board of Appeals, town staff, the boards, peer review experts in civil engineering and design have really been trying to work through this problem of how do we get, you know, forty condos worth of vehicles in and out of the site in a safe and efficient manner that, you know, keeps the residents safe, keeps people that are driving on Randolph Ave safe, and then also doesn't dramatically overburden and, and kind of change the nature of this driveway that has been shared by these three parcels for, for many years. One question and notion that has come up during the public hearing is, you know, if you look at this, this site, it, it sort of is, is a little bit set back from Randolph Ave and has a little bit of a kind of panhandle that connects it to Randolph Ave. But the majority of it on the south and southeastern side actually has frontage on the dump access road. The dump access road, so named because it's how you used to get to the dump, now it's a golf course. It's locked off. No one really has any real need to go up there except for National Grid has a take station that, that's accessed off of it. They have rights to get into the gate at the end of that road. So, you know, the, the notion that's come up during that hearing is, well, what if we access this project via the access road? If you look at the site and if you look at the, there's a conceptual site plan that the developer has put together. If the project can get in and out of its sort of self via the dump access road, it dramatically improves the site plan from a stormwater and drainage perspective, from a design perspective. It pulls a lot of the major impacts in terms of pavement and bulk of the building away from its closest to butter. And I think most importantly creates a safe access that terminates at a signalized intersection at the dump access road and Reed Street, if you're familiar with that signal. In the current configuration, all of those cars would be entering and exiting just north of that signal, so you've got sort of a signalized intersection and then a really active driveway. It's, it's really not great. So I, I don't want to speak for anyone besides myself, but my, my, my takeaway from these hearings and these discussions has been that most people agree, the board, the board's peer reviewers, town staff, the developer, a butt is to the project, agree that the project would benefit from access to the dump access road. The, the wrinkle that we've encountered is that unlike a townway like Canton Ave or Walnut Street or, or any of the other, you know, dozens of townways in town, where you can just pop open a, a curb cut and access, you know, via driveway. The dump access road is not a townway. It is owned by the town and it is a driveway, but is not a way in the, in the same way that a, a public street is. And so in order to access it, the town needs the grand easement, which would basically say all of the sort of restrictions, you know, on this, on this driveway are still in place. We're going to have a locked gate, you know, only National Grid or other people with a key to the lock hidden, but this parcel at seven twenty eight Randolph Ave has rights of access over this portion of, of, of the driveway. The, the further wrinkle with that is that it's, it's, it's a property right in, in town property, which can only be given by town meeting. And so in the context of a public hearing for a forty B project, which has very strict deadlines about, you know, when a decision has to be rendered and, you know, when, when a vote has to happen on, on a project. The timelines between that and a potential town meeting have, have, have not really lined up. The developer, for quite some time, bristled, bristled is the wrong word, but sort of was hesitant about the idea of putting an approval of their project at risk of, of, of a town meeting vote in sort of the medium term future. And so was really, you know, trying to get an approval based on their original site plan with the shared driveway to Randolph Ave. But we've, we've spoken with them, we've kind of, you know, convinced them of the benefits of, of this course of action, and so they've agreed to continue that public hearing until January to see potentially what town meeting has to say about granting the easement, at which point they would submit a, a revised site plan. Again, that, that, you know, uses the access road and would use that driveway to Randolph Ave as kind of a secondary emergency only access, which, which again, as we said earlier, you know, most folks agree that it yields a better site plan and a better project. So what we have right now is the developer has proposed a draft easement plan. That plan is in the hands of town council. Town council is in the process of drafting an article in time for, for next week's deadline. And then would move on to the process of, of drafting a, a draft easement agreement that would, you know, outline, you know, exactly what rights this parcel would have to this short segment of, of the access road. And we would see what happens at town meeting and then subsequently what would happen, you know, based on that at the public hearing for the, the forty B project, which has continued until January twenty-fourth. So that's the lay of the land right now. Short story is, we require a town meeting vote in order to, you know, get a, 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 a less impactful, safer, more efficient site plan for this project, so I'm happy to answer any other questions that anyone has.
Mr. Wells, you are recognized. You're on mute, Mitch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tim, get your pen out. So I know a lot of history of this, so I'm going to give you a couple of pointers here. First off, anyone who walks the existing dump road is, I'm going to follow my life. It is an atrocious condition, and even though we've been working for what seems like a lifetime on building an animal shelter up there, that still is not to come fruition, to fruition. Use of that road is going to come in to become a reality. The second thing is going to the seven eleven Randolph Ave hearings, and you will remember this, Tim. There was a lot of suggestion that, you know, perhaps could, a set of lights be installed there to diminish the safety issues that will exist when that is built because you're going on to an unsegmented intersection and the fact that there's a set of lights at Randolph and Reed, the end of twenty-eight and Reed Stale, they're just too close, according to that. The point is that set of lights was added in the twenty year, about twenty years ago, in the made, the last major Route twenty-eight upgrade for specifically this reason, with the potential that something would be built off of that dump road at some point our lifetimes, and it, from a safety perspective, it only makes sense. I think it's a much safer use, exit, exit, exit and entrance use to upgrade that road and have this project going that way versus going in through the three existing houses that exist there now, which puts you right back into the same thing I just described at seven eleven, which is an unsignaled entrance onto a very heavily traveled Northbound Avenue, Route twenty-eight. So the next point that I bring is for the developer, and this was brought up, you might remember there was a proposal when you were assistant planning years ago, there was a developer who's now deceased who wanted to develop this, and one of the things that your predecessor said, I, you found, this is the resident traffic commission, was that we redo that road, that is part of the mitigation that that road gets redone and brought to grade as it should be for any use that's going to take place in the future, and I hope that, that you can work that out on that. And my, my last point of this is that as far as the, the development in any access egress from Randolph Ave through that driveway, should this be granted and approved by town meeting, let that be gated, similar to what I believe seven eleven has to do between their property and the DPW, and even though there'd be like an emergency access egress in there. It's not for general use, it only views for emergencies. As you know, there are other similar things like that in towns, so. I do support this. I think it's a smart move. But I do think those things in there, you want to get those all wrapped. I think the mitigation and the, and getting that the developer to bring that road to upgrade is that, just my one final point, was there any discussion at all about just instead of an easement, making this a public way in the town?
Yeah, we, we, we talked about that a little bit, and I, I think the, the thinking behind that and, and it would, it would, it would definitely make things a little bit more straightforward, but not that much more straightforward. Mr. Wells, as, as, as you mentioned, the, the entire length of that road is, is not in great shape. And so if, you know, if you would need to sort of make a decision, all right, which portions of it do we want to make a townway versus which portions do we want to have, you know, remain a driveway? You know, we, we may be in the same position where, you know, a portion of it gets improved up to the, the developer's driveway and then future developments, whether it's the animal shelter or anything else, you know, take care of the rest. I think that the, the, the thinking there was, there's, i- if, if we're going to talk about only doing a portion of it, the, the easement is just a little bit more straight. Everything requires a town meeting vote, whether it's accepting a townway or granting an easement. But the process of accepting a townway, as we just did with, with Woodlock Drive, involves a bunch of steps between today and town meeting that the timeline just really didn't, didn't really match up with. You've got to have two public hearings at the select board sandwiched in around a planning board meeting, you know, to, to make a recommendation, and, and we really couldn't make that schedule work. You know, the other issue, again, if, if, if we wanted to talk about the full access drive being a townway, there are other property owners, you know, the horse farm, as you mentioned, that, that a butt on that access road and, you know, there's DCR property, there's the golf course, and rather than going through the exercise of kind of gaming out, all right, what does this mean if the horse farm can now access the dump road as a public way? Now the, the, the golf course can access it as a public way. I think we just wanted to sort of focus solely on this project and this project's issues. That doesn't foreclose the opportunity of thinking about this. I mean, eventually, we're going to have to get people from Randolph Ave up to the animal shelter. At which case we may want to talk about, you know, do we want to have this be a public way? And then we can kind of, you know, analyze the, the implications of that for the other property owners.
One final point, Mr. Chair, if I may just follow up on mine. So, so just, just on that, Tim, my only, so I accept all that and I still support this. My, my, I'm just thinking for the benefit of the town, if this developer wants to commit any wants, and this was something going back to that Mr. Dennehy had pushed for, where the prior developer was, that if someone wants to use that road, and we know, or at least we're trying to build an animal shelter at the end of it, which is the very end of the road, in the mitigation of this, why not push? Versus, and I, I'm fine, easement or public play, whichever, I'm just bringing up for the point of discussion. Let's get that road paved to grade for what our citizens are going to use it for the most, which isn't going to be to go to that development, it's going to be to go to the animal shelter. That's, that's just my thought, like, let's, if it's on the table here, let's get it. It's not even another hundred yards, it's less than, I mean, the whole road is less than a half a mile from twenty-eight to, to the animal shelter. I don't even think it's a half.
Yeah, I, they, I, I, I don't have the precise measurement in front of me, but the, 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 the end of the, the easement kind of goes, I think, a little less than halfway up to the animal shelter, so. I, I haven't had a detailed conversation yet with the developer about exactly the nature of the improvements that they're proposing. But their, their current proposal, you know, includes improvements to the existing driveway to, to, to a state that, that would accommodate all of their traffic. I think in the worst case scenario, we're talking about improvements, you know. up to 700 feet, you know, from Randolph Ave, you know, up the dump access road, which, 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 which is great. I think we should absolutely have a conversation about, you know, all right, you guys are out there, you know, let's do the whole thing. I think that's a, a perfectly, perfectly acceptable thing to ask. You know, we, we do want to, you know, we do want to make sure that we kind of stay focused on, you know, the purpose of this is to create a safe alternative site plan for this project. And so, you know, definitely want to make sure that we're, you know, we're all cooperating and we're all moving in the same direction. But I think, you know, even, even in, even in the sort of the worst case scenario, we're getting a significant fraction of that dump road, you know, up to, you know, passable standards, which I think is, 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 is pretty great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tim.
Any other questions or comments from the select board for Mr. Suwinski on this item? Let's see, any, Mr. Milano, can we turn to you now for the one article for the FY 2023 budget, please?
All right, the, the select board finance committee is meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM and we have extended invitation to our counterparts on the school committee. And so we will be tackling the subject tomorrow morning to flesh out exactly what that article might look like. The town, when it set its budget at town meeting, used one figure for state aid, which ended up coming in a little bit higher. So there is some additional money that could be appropriated, whether that's the reserve fund or some other, reserve fund is kind of where we're thinking right now. But we'll have a conversation tomorrow with the select board finance committee. Hopefully some of our counterparts on the school committee and have an article prepared, you know, from there.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. And Mr. Zulus, did I hear eight o'clock and not seven o'clock?
Eight o'clock, but that doesn't change the fact that bedtime is coming for us. So even the early meetings, so FYI.
You recognize Mr. Zulus, anything for other?
I think Mr. Zulus wants emotional adjournance to go to bed.
The, the reference that I made was last year in the finance committee meeting, we had a number of 7:00 AM meetings. So he's greatly relieved, I'm sure they have an eight o'clock, maybe.
And it's in person, it's going to be in person, too.
That's right. And he would not have a counterpart if it was at 7:00 AM. There's no way I'm going to go up to that.
And Nick, anything that's appropriate on this that we can have in the financial goal section of the retreat on Saturday would be very helpful.
Certainly, we have a, a packet of materials that we will have for everyone.
Excellent. Thank you. Item number nine. This is for discussion, not approval. Amendment to the project funding agreement for the annual shelter between the Milton Animal League and the town of Milton. Tim and Kevin, can we call upon you and Mr. Zewinsky, could you introduce this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Old, old school folks may remember the project funding agreement that the town signed with the Milton Animal League regarding the animal shelter project. The, the upshot of that is that the town would provide the land for the animal shelter as well as, you know, staff support for the, the process of designer selection and construction and, and, and all of that. And that the actual funding for the construction of the shelter would come via gifts from the Milton Animal League to the town. That funding and that funding agreement has been in place since, I believe, 2015, 2016. And, you know, has been kind of governing the, 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 the procedure of, of, of the animal shelter project since then. In, 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 in recent times, the town, after we went out for bids in December of 2021 for a general contractor to finally actually begin building this thing. You know, we discovered that the, the, the sort of the, the, the prices that we got from general contractors were, were far beyond anyone's ability to actually fund this project. And so the animal shelter advisory committee kind of went back to not quite square one, but square two, to kind of figure out how can we kind of reduce costs and get this project back on track in a way that, you know, we can actually build it within the financial constraints that the, the, the funder, the Milton Animal League has. A number of, of, of different tracks have, have changed, one of which being an appropriation that we got out of the capital budget at the most recent town meeting for $700,000 for site work. For the, the site off the dump access road, which is, is going to hopefully be a leaps and bounds benefit to the project and, and really help the budget for that, for that project. But really is kind of in, at odds with the funding agreement, which, which very clearly says that the town's not going to provide financial resources for the project. I think everyone agrees that it's the right thing to do. Town meeting agreed, the select board agreed. But we need to go back and, and clean up that funding agreement to reflect the current reality that we're dealing with the project. Going through this between myself, town council and Marion McCetrick, who is counsel for the Milton Animal League. You know, what we kind of, you know, realized is there are a number of other elements of both the funding agreement and also the memorandum of understanding between the town and the animal league that are just outdated and, and really don't reflect the current, the current situation with the project. I, I don't think there's anything earth shattering in there, but I, I think we and, and, and town council can, can back me up or correct me on this. We'd like to take just a little bit more time to review those documents and make sure that we're bringing you a sort of a complete sweep of edits that will really bring those two agreements up to date and, and kind of a good foundation going forward as we bring on a new project manager and, and go back out to bid for construction.
Thank you, Mr. Foytag.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. I thought that was a great summary by Mr. Zewinsky. Just in terms of a timetable, I think that this is about a, a two week review process. There's the two documents, the funding agreement and the memorandum of understanding. Tim and I have already talked through most of the changes. And I think that over the probably the next week, we'll, we'll iron that out with Marion McCatrick and then have it well in advance of your meeting in two weeks.
So we'll have this on the October 18th agenda. We'll be ready for that timetable. Thank you. Anything else on this from any member of the select board? Turning to item number 11 on the agenda, again, discussion, not approval, general election warrant, November 8, 2022. Mr. Milano, you're recognized.
We jumped over item number 10 there for contract.
You are, you, we did, and I apologize, you are correct. I had made my entry for 1018 there and skipped it. So we have discussion approval contract with Horsley Witten Group in the town of Milton, Mass. Consultant services relative to the town's open space and recreation plan. And Mr. Zewinsky, we, you turn to you. Thank you for being with us for the duration.
You know, I love being here. Tha- tha- thank you, Mr. Chair, Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development. As you, you probably know, a few, a few months ago, the, the select board authorized the, actually, I don't even know if we, if we brought this to you all because it was such a small, small contract. Anyway, the open space and recreation committee had put out a solicitation for consultant services for a consultant to help us update the open space and recreation plan, which has not been updated since 2006. This is, is going to be funded by a supplemental budget request that town meeting approved for the planning board budget for $50,000, which was really, really excellent. And so we put out a solicitation, we got two very good responses. The open space and recreation committee chose a response from Horsley Witten Group, which is a, a very prominent planning and engineering firm. Has done a lot of great open space planning, you know, throughout, throughout the region, including in Massachusetts. It was the low bid, which is always good. And it was also, you know, really checked off every single box that the committee, the committee had, including a really robust public outreach plan, which we think is really, really crucial, you know, given, I know the select board has, has, has heard about a lot of a really relevant open space and recreation issues, you know, these days. And so we think that having a really robust public outreach plan is going to be really important. So I'm, I'm just here tonight to, to request that you authorize the town administrator to sign a contract with Horsley Witten Group. I have, I have a draft contract with them right now, waiting to get their comments back. At which point I'll run that up the, the flagpole, the town council for their review. And hopefully we can get that into the town administrator's hands within the next week or so.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Mr. Zewinsky, from any members of the board? Is there a motion to approve the contract with Horsley Witten Group?
Let's also approve the contract, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It is moved and seconded. Let me go to Tim and then back to Mike. Is that all right?
Probably going to say the same.
Did you have a point of clarification?
Could we also authorize the town administrator to sign on the board behalf?
Right. When you said that, I just assumed it was going to be in there, when you said it earlier, but thank you for that follow up.
I'll accept that, Mr. Chiana Kula.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. And with the second is agreeable, I can see nodding at the head and the affirmative, any further discussion? Until the roll call vote, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And now we have to say that you go to number 11. Thank you, Jim. Don't go too far. We may be calling on you later. Mr. Milano, number 11, please. Discussion on the general election warrant, November 8, 2022.
Sure, we requested that include this on the agenda in some hope that this would be ready, but the secretary of the Commonwealth just released the final ballot questions to the town clerks today. So that language will be adopted into the warrant, which will be ready for the board's approval on October 18th at your next meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Milano? Item number 12 is a discussion select board retreat agenda. It has been referenced already, it is underway. The chairs are waiting the remainder of replies to its email of 9:30 soliciting recommended items. That will be very important to framing our retreat, their desire from every member. That's what's going to lead to successful outcomes. So please acknowledge that in one form or another with what it is that you have to propose. Timing is going to be critical as this is upon us on Saturday morning from 9:00 to noon time at the council in aging. And we'll reinforce that one later. So thank you very, very much. Anything, anybody has as a comment or question on the retreat? We'll turn now to number 13. This is a discussion update on the litigation against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority regarding the condition of the stairs located at the MBTA station at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. And Mr. Fitek, can we call upon you for an update, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. The update is quite brief. The complaint has been revised since our last meeting and I'm ready to file it. It should be filed within the next day or two. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Fitek. Any questions for Mr. Fitek on this item? If not, we'll move to item number 14, committee appointments. Mr. Milano, can we turn to you, please?
Sure. These three appointments, their terms came to a close at the end of July. These are annual appointments made by the select board and planning board. And the intention would be for the select board to vote, followed by a, a planning board vote, we hope not too far after this one. So just unlike the last meeting, this would be two, the two boards voting separately outside of a joint meeting. These are just reappointments from the existing members. There are two additional members. Obviously, Member Musto and Pauline Benson, who our terms have not yet expired.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Go ahead, go ahead, Roxanne.
I'm sorry, I will make the motion to approve the following candidates for reappointment to the master plan implementation committee, Cheryl Taggias, Richard Burke and Tabor Keely.
Okay, Ms. Musto, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
It was the Wells, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Item number 15, the town administrator's report, Mr. Milano.
Sure, thank you.
You have a good number of things to update us on here, so we're all.
On the agenda, as you can see, the educational seminar series, we are, have scheduled two of them. Public records Tuesday, November 2nd, 22nd at 7:00 PM. Conflict of interest and state ethics, Tuesday, December 13th at 7:00 PM. We are still working on finalizing the open meeting law session, which we had originally announced, but had missed that it was going to coincide with select board meeting. So we're working on some alternative dates on that to be held in the Keys Conference Room at the library. So thanks to the town clerk, Office of Town Council for working together, together on that, excuse me. In terms of town business, I have two, two new employees to talk about. First is the assessors, the board of assessors have appointed Charles O'Shea as the new chief appraiser. Jeff Funk, our former chief appraiser, returned to the town of Sharon, where he previously worked earlier this year. And the board met to interview candidates over the last few weeks. Mr. O'Shea comes to us from both Patriot and Vision, which are the two main companies that do assessing work in New England and Massachusetts. Many decades of experience working on that side of things. So we're, we're excited to have him and he started this week.
And Mr. Milano, we would welcome an opportunity for you to introduce him to the board at a time that is mutually convenient to you and Mr. O'Shea.
Certainly. And secondly, in terms of our finance director, as you know, we, our finance director Karen Praval left in April. We've since advertised that position. And I'm pleased to announce that Amy Dexter will be taking the position of finance director for the town of Milton, returning to us from Milton Public Schools. We're excited to have Amy back to support our office and, and the rest of the town departments, as well as the school departments. As you know, that's a position that needs to work closely with town, schools and everybody else in between. And so we're excited to collaborate with the school department on a, on a position that is so crucial to everything that we do on a daily basis.
Thank you, and we welcome back Amy, Mr. Zulus.
Can I just ask, will Amy, will, will the school department be hiring a, 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 a finance director or is this a, a combined role now?
No, they've done that. The schools have temporarily filled it.
Mr. Milano, do you want to respond?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, I just meant that our, our town finance director works so closely with everybody that it's, it's a benefit to us. And, but she will be a town of Milton employee as the town's finance director. And the Milton Public Schools will be bringing in an interim. And then in terms of future, long-term, I can't speak to that. Sorry if that was confusing.
I, I thought that was the kid. I just want to make sure that, that that's where we're doing it. Thanks.
And Mr. Wells, you are recognized.
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank Emery Fagan for this as well. I know that she was working hard on this since Karen left. And she, as she did previously when she was town administrator before and all of her roles here. Always looking out for the best interest of the town. I know that that was not an easy thing to do. But and to Mr. Zulus' point, they did, they have retained an interim. Someone that we all know that you'll be hearing very shortly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We won't do any second guessing, but we could probably come pretty close.
You could have been a detective, Mr. Chair.
That game, right. Thank you very much, Mr. Wells.
And then just lastly, just a few things that I've been, I was unable to attend, but I know the council on aging had a great fit for life this weekend. My wife and young son and my mother-in-law were at it. I was unable to be there, but we worked together at Celebrate Milton on Sunday afternoon, which was a nice event and nice turnout. And I will be speaking at the chamber tomorrow with Chase Berkeley to, at that, at their luncheon tomorrow. So look forward to meeting with folks in the chamber.
Thank you. Chair's report. I'll just add two things at the present time. Yesterday, there was a ribbon cutting for medical aesthetics at 524 Adam Street. Senator Timolty and Representative Driscoll also attended. Well, I represented the select board. It's a marvelous facility and it was a very nice welcoming to that new business enterprise in East Milton Square. The other is that I was able to deliver the Select Board's proclamation for the 100th anniversary of Seneg at the parish last week ago, this past Sunday, accompanied by proclamations from the mayor of the city of Quincy, because it is a parish that extends across both communities, and a proclamation from Senator Timolty. It was a wonderful event. Mass was followed by a very, very nice reception in the basement of the church. So thank you all for that. I'll move on to item number 17, public comment response. I'd like to just say in follow up to Mr. Shea's comments that and I'll read directly from a citizen who had written saying, "All public meetings in the town of Milton, virtual and in person exemplify civil discourse, empathetic listening, and respect for all people and their opinions." And I'm hoping that we can fit this into our discussion at the retreat within our goals. We set a very high standard as the select board for the town of Milton. And this is something that I think many people would like us to be sure to address. Any comments from any other members of the board? Future meeting dates and locations. We've mentioned the retreat, Council on Aging. Nine to noon, we'll work sharply, beginning at nine and end sharply at noon time. And then Tuesday, October 18th, which was cited earlier. The question is to whether or not that will be a Zoom or an in-person meeting. Could you please let Lynn know your preferences for that? And then we can move accordingly, followed by Tuesday, November 1. I can't believe that, November already. And our planning in Tuesday, November 15. Item number 19 is a discussion approval of one-day local license. And there are two of them. Maybe they can be combined. Is that your intent? Mr. Wells, you will be in that direction?
I'll do that, Mr. Chair, but just a point that I'd like to make note that today is one of the highest holidays of the Jewish faith. It is Yom Kippur. And I wish that I had known this before we met today, because I think I would have brought it up and asked that we move it to a different date. And I believe that both the rabbi and all of our Jewish residents know how much we respect them and we want to wish them their best on this very high day in their calendar year. I just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. And
Now I'll make a motion for you. Oh, sorry, if you want to answer that, I, I.
I just wanted to say that it's in that respect that our meeting was moved from yesterday to today as well. Okay. So, Mr. Wells, you wish to make the motion, and then we'll go to Ms. Musto, Mr. Wells.
So I am gonna make a motion to approve. What number are we on here now? Just 19, 8 and B, right? So I'm gonna make a motion, approve a one-day local license for the Milton Arts Center Comedy Show featuring Paul D'Angelo on Friday, 7th, October 7, 2022. And Catholic parishes of the Blue Hills, also known as St. Pius Church, for their Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 16th, 2022, from 1 to 4.
Okay, these two one-day local license requests have been moved. Is there a second place?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any discussion? Take the roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Item number 20, discussion approval, meeting minutes, August 10, 2022, and August 23rd, 2022.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from August 10, 2022, and August 23rd, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Is there a second place?
I'll second, sure.
Ms. Musto, any discussion? Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. At this time, the select board will be leaving public session or executive session. And I'll read several motions related to that. We will adjourn from executive session, not returning to public session. And after the adjournment, we will reconvene as the trustees of the Governor's Stotan Trust. Just to give an idea to everybody of the protocol. So at this time, I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of the Kidder Ranch Library, 101 Blue Hill Parkway, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the neighboring and the negotiating position of the select board. Again, the select board will be adjourning at the conclusion of the executive session. Ms. Musto, you will be recusing yourself.
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll land call. Ms. Musto, back at the appropriate time.
Okay.
The second motion is, is we have to do a roll call vote on this. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Is that a second? Yes.
I'll second, I'm Mr. Chair. I'll second, and I didn't know you were seconding.
All right, it's Mr. Zulus, yes. And Ms. Bradley? I'm sorry, Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
I'll be recusing myself.
Right. And just wanted to note that for the record, and Mr. Doyle, yes. And the second is executive session pursuant to Massachusetts laws, chapter 38, paragraph 21, section A subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. I moved winter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining units, Milton Clark, the unit of the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Milton Professional Management Association, Milton Public Employee Association, Milton Firefighters Local 1116, Milton Police Association, and Milton Superior Officers. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
What about our union, Mr. Chair? I don't see our union listed there.
Roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Next item is executive session pursuant to Massachusetts laws, chapter 38, paragraph 22, approval, meeting minutes of January 20, 2022, March 23, 2022, April 6, 2022, and April 13, 2022. I went to, to executive session to approve the executive session meeting minutes based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Zulus, I hear you second. Thank you. Any comment? Say that, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells. And you're muted, Richard, but I think I heard you say yes.
Talking Kevin Freitag's microphone instead of mine.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
I'm gonna abstain because of the dates on that.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter 38, paragraph 21, section A subsection 3. Discussion strategy with respect to litigation relative to the final environmental impact assessment of the Federal Aviation Administration, RNAB, runway 41 at Boston Logan International Airport. I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to litigation relative to the final environmental impact assessment of the Federal Aviation Administration, RNAB, runway 4L at Boston Logan International Airport. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. And then a reminder that the select board will adjourn from executives, in executive session for the evening, and then the trustees of the Governor's Stotan Trust will convene. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. So we're reminded to turn off our video and our microphones, and then we'll go to the alternate site.
And please let me know when to come back, okay?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and good evening. We are now continuing or calling to order the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust in Milton, Massachusetts. We have two items on the agenda for this evening, but first let me introduce the trustees. Martha Doyle serving this year as your chair, Mrs. Zulus.
Mike Zulus, trustee.
Mr. Wells.
Richard Wells, trustee.
Aaron.
Aaron Bradley, trustee.
And Roxanne.
Roxanne Musto, trustee.
And with us Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator, and Lyndon Napoli, Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator. But to all of us, actually. So the first item to discuss is with Town Council, we got a Governor Stoughton Trust background and eligible uses of land sale proceeds. Mr. Freitag, by way of that comment, we introduce you and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry my hands raised here. Let me see if I can put that down. There we go. So just by way of brief update, since the last time we all spoke, I had a chance to reach out to the Attorney General's Office to their Charities Division and speak with the head of that division, Jonathan Green. I was joined on that phone call from Julie Kramer from Milton's Housing Trust. And the purpose of that phone call was to get a sense from the Attorney General's Office how they would like the Select Board to proceed with potentially responding to any, any questions or regarding use or a request for use of funds by the Housing Trust. In other words, what would the AG's position be on the Milton Affordable Housing Trust requesting funds? And the direction that we got pretty clearly from they, they won't, and he will not weigh in on a request until it has been made to the Select Board and the Select Board has then forwarded with its endorsement to the AG's office for some guidance. And so without understanding, Julie Kramer was going to spend some time sort of revisiting the Affordable Housing Trust's request to the Governor Stoughton Trustees. And I suspect that she'll have something by the next meeting of the trustees, at which time the Select Board will be asked to consider it. Whether, you know, that request falls within the scope of the terms of the trust is something that I will certainly be happy to weigh in on either before or at that meeting. That'll put the Select Board in a position to, if it's a close call, so to speak, to push it over to the AG's office to get some, some review and, you know, potential approval by the AG's office on the specific use of funds from the trust for the purposes for which the Affordable Housing Trust has requested them. So I
Just to back up Kevin, to make sure that we have it. The Affordable Housing Trust has to make a formal recommendation for a specific amount of the Select Board. And the Select Board has to act upon that. Once that's done, that then goes back to the Attorney General's Office. Is that fair?
That's right. And just, just maybe for a little bit more clarity, the Affordable Housing Trust is going to make a request, whether it be that the, that the that the trustees that the trustees give some money from the, the Governor Stoughton Trust to the Affordable Housing Trust, or perhaps do something else, maybe take some action on the property. But whatever it is, the trust, the Affordable Housing Trust is going to make a specific request. It's then going to come back before this board. And at that time, it, you know, potentially could fall into one of three categories. It's definitely within the scope of the trust, which is that the trust is established for the benefit of the poor of Milton. It's definitely outside the scope of the trust, which I don't think is going to be the case because I've been talking with Julie about, you know, what, what is and what is without, you know, what's within and out and what is outside of the scope of the trust. But then if it's something that's sort of on the line, but it's something that I still think is, is, you know, a potential use of funds, but we'd like to get some guidance from the AG's office at that time. The AG's office said we're happy to weigh in on it if it's something that's sort of, if it's on the line.
Thank you. Mr. Wells. You're muted, Richard.
No, I gotta move my
Okay.
Sorry. So thank you, Kevin. So I'm gonna a little bit of historic here. I feel like a history teacher these days. When I first joined this board six years ago, I was on the Affordable Housing Trust. That was the year that we, the five million actually moved into the town's account. We signed the P and S that came over. When I arrived there, the Affordable Housing Trust, and I was only for those, had drafted a letter then asking for, I think it was two million or 2.5 million from the sale that the five million that we received. My predecessor, Tom Hurley, on the phone, had actually signed it, and your predecessor, John Flynn, after conferring with the AG's office, I believe it was, it was either Joanna or Mary, Mary back then, not only said, did away with that letter and then told me, don't, for me not to sign a letter. But are you telling me the opinion of the AG's office has changed? Because everything I've learned from, from Joanna to Mary, Scott Hasbager to John Flynn, is that to just use funds from the Governor Stoughton Fund is defined in the will could not be used for affordable housing, that the AG did not view affordable housing as quote unquote, meeting the needs of the poor. Are you telling me this is a change in opinion?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not weighing in actually on any use at all. My, the, the point of that, what I was just saying before was that the AG's office wants something specific to respond to from the Select Board.
Okay, that's my second question. Yeah. So don't we already have something in there? Isn't, hasn't the Affordable Housing Trust, going back to when Melinda was on there, working on something with you for the four acres, for affordable project on the four acres to be approved by the AG?
Yes, that, that's one thing that, that had been looked at for some time. I think that the, the most recent request was for funds. But that request, it seemed in discussing it over, discussing with Julie Kramer and with Jonathan Green, needed to perhaps be, be sort of reworked to be more specific about the exact purpose for which the funds would be used, which would put the trustees in a better position to say, yeah, that's in line with the trust, and the AG's office say, yep, that's in line with the trust.
Okay.
But that's about, that's about funds, and it's not about endowment funds. It's not about the five million from the sale. And, and actually, just by way of some additional information that Nick Milano was able to share with me today, that he got from Jim McCauley. Mike Zulus had asked at the last meeting, or one of the members of the, one of the trustees had asked whether the funds that were in the account before the sale proceeds from that property hit the account, some $300,000, whether or not those funds were still available. It's the opinion of the treasurer that they're not, that those funds have, have been used.
I figured.
Those, those funds are gone. They were rental income from properties, buildings at the property, that those funds have been used. What's left in the property now is either endowment funds or, or funds that were generated as in interest by the funds that were in the endowment fund.
The interest of the five million.
Correct. And there's also, there's also a piece that's in there, some $350,000, that's apparently related to the sale of an easement to Pulte over the remaining acreage up there at the Governor Stoughton Trust that was necessary as part of the development of those acres.
I remember that.
So those, those funds are there too. And the AG's office said that they would, they were willing to provide us some clarity and an opinion too on whether those funds, the sale of the funds from the sale of the easement, if those funds were available to be spent by the trustees, or if they needed to also be dealt with as endowment funds similar to the sale proceeds from the property.
Let me mention before, Mike, going to you, that I received an email this morning from Julie Kramer saying that unfortunately she was unable to get a quorum for their last Affordable Housing Trust meeting. And they would like to discuss this at another time after they have a successful meeting in the coming weeks, just to give you that background information. So Mike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. Just to fill in on some of the points, the Superior Court decision on the use of the Pulte funds is clear that the interest income can be used. The Attorney General's Office has not weighed in on whether affordable housing is a use for the poor according to the will. Seems to me, we've had this discussion before, the, it's, it's, it's a, the opinion of the trustees on whether that is a use, and that's initial, that's, it sounds like the Attorney General's Office wants that initial view of whether the trustees believe that affordable housing is a use for the poor. And then the Attorney General's Office may take a view one way or the other. Seems to me, I would be surprised if this Attorney General took the view that affordable housing is not a use for the poor, but, but I guess we'll see.
Mr. Chair. So I, I just, and this may predate you, Michael, and I, I'm, believe me, I've followed this very closely. Kevin, I'm sure if you asked John, I mean, I sat in a meeting where what you just said was the complete opposite of what John Flynn came back and reported to this board. And I believe at the time Scott Hasbager was a member of Murphy Hesse and was weighing in on this. So I mean, I remember pretty clearly and we were specifically told that the AG took the opinion that affordable housing was not, that's why I asked Kevin the question. So if it's changed, I just want to see where it's coming from, or if we have to, if we have to creatively try to prepare this, that's another thing. But I, I have a pretty vivid memory of this, and I'm sure Kevin, if you talk to John Flynn about this tomorrow, he would reiterate what I'm saying tonight.
Kevin, and then Mike.
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, look, all I can tell you is, is, is the discussions that we've had since I've been on the board and, and the view the view of the Attorney General's Office and the head of the charities, Jonathan Green, a couple of years ago, was they weren't going to take a position on that. There is nothing in writing on that. There is no, you know, I'm not aware of any opinion on that. Someone may have said it at some point. But, you know, in my view, that doesn't really mean very much. Seems to me, we're the trustees, we need to take a view on whether we think affordable housing is a use for the poor. And then if we take, if we take the view that it is, then the Attorney General's Office may, in its role overseeing public charities, may say, well, you're right, or well, no, you're not. So, so I, I'm not aware of any official position that's been taken. I'm not aware of any informal position that's been taken when, when, certainly since I've been involved and when I was involved as the chair. So so maybe someone said something like that some years ago, Richard, but seems to me that we need to make a decision as a board and then have the Attorney General's Office weigh in.
I agree. We, we have to get off this matter and go around. Roxanne.
Yes, I had a quick question. The last time that we met, I know I had mentioned something about any kind of use on that, on it for older individuals that, like we have housing, for instance, in Miller Ave and things like that. Were you able to find out any kind of information about if the land can be used for residents that are really, you know, meet the criteria for affordability and happen to be older?
So I have not spoken to the AG's office since the last time you and I spoke, Roxanne, on that point. But I think what, what I got very clearly from the AG's office was the Select Board needs to ask us a question or questions. And we don't want the questions to just sort of, we don't want hypo, you know, we would all, you know, many hypotheticals. We want the Select Board to come to us and say, we think we, we have in, in good faith that we can use the funds for this purpose in accordance with the trust. Give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down from, as, you know, as head of Charities Division. That was, that was the message that I kept getting loud and clear from Jonathan Green was we, we're not going to do this prospectively. We're not going to be advising the Select, you know, the, the Housing Trust on how to shape its requests to the trustees. We're not going to do that. We're going to wait for the trustees to come to us with a question.
So that goes to where Mike is, if I read this correctly, and why don't we do that? Richard, and then Mike.
So I'm fine with that. But having had such a long history in this, and I hear Michael, but I disagree with him. I mean, how would I I mean, how would I know all these people if I hadn't met with them? Well, I've heard their opinions for so long. And, and one thing I could say about John Flynn and anyone who knows him, John always, 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 you know, took the position of protecting the found town for us and looking out for the town's best interests. So I think if we're going to do this to Mike's point, I think we need to be very specific. I think it has to be a, a very well thought out, well, not just a letter, give us $300,000 for affordable housing. I think it has to be designed with intention, with, with some real tangible goals that, while they may not align perfectly with what is up, what is described in that will, it has to show someone. And Julie knows this. I've had, I've listened to Julie about ways to buy down, you know, to, to make more units that are more, you know, an $80,000 median in Milton, or someone meeting an affordable unit is not necessarily meet the needs of the poor. So I think if we're going to do this, I don't think we just make the request, say, okay, we want to give us $300,000. I think some time and effort has to be put into exactly how this is going to be used and how it's going to meet goals of that will.
Okay, Mike and then Erin.
Yeah, well, sometimes memories fade, uh, but, but, but I will say, you know, I, I don't necessarily think that we, we, Kevin may differ and Kevin's view controls, but I don't necessarily think we need to ask. Right? I, I, I think we can take an action in good faith as a, as, as the, as the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust. And then if the Attorney General's Office comes to us and says, well, that wasn't appropriate, that's fine. But I, I don't know that we necessarily need to ask. The board may want to do that just to make sure that, uh, that, that, uh, the, the Attorney General's office doesn't take action on its own. But I don't know that, uh, as, as the trustees, we necessarily need to go every time we do something. We don't go to them every time we give money to the food pantry, to the residence fund, you know? And so if we take the view that this is, that affordable housing is, is for the poor as well, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to go to them, but, uh, but, uh, but I guess we'll see how we, we'll see how we go on that.
Erin.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, Kevin, aren't we talking about the easement? The money that, that came from the easement portion of this? Isn't that what you and Julie were going back to discuss?
No, the, that was, it was part of what we were going to, what we discussed with Jonathan Green. We, we discussed sort of the idea generally of the Affordable Housing Trust requesting money. And then also the endowment funds and the interest, and also this issue of the easement. It was, it was all part of that discussion.
Okay, but are we right now discussing the money that was just specifically part of that easement? Is that what we're talking about? Or are we talking about it in more general terms?
I, I think we're talking about it in more general terms.
Okay. And my other question is, is, isn't it true that, you know, there can be a history of a hundred years plus and people can, a new person can come in and rule differently? I just learned about this in Ich Ball. So I'm just curious. You know, the Attorney General's Office can say what they want for decades and then we get a new one and they can change their mind about how they would rule on how we would use this money, correct?
Yes.
All right. So then the history really doesn't matter. Let's take a swipe at it. Let's see what we can do. I'm with Mike. I don't care about the history. We've got a situation here where we need to use that money to help people that are really struggling and that need affordable housing here in town. So I'm, I'm a hundred percent with Mike on this one. And we should just, we should just act and then, you know, kind of ask, ask questions later almost. Kind of one of those things where it's like, we have, we have the authority to do this. And, um, and if the Attorney General's Office doesn't like it, trust me, they'll come back and tell us. But, um, but I'm just, you know, is that, is that what our steps are, Kevin? Or is it either we ask a question or we just go forward? I, I guess that's what I'm trying to make sure that I understand.
Well, I think I've just tried to provide some different options for the board here. The board can do a couple of different things. It, it has acted in the past on certain uses of interest, um, of, on its own volition and other issue in other instances where it thought that perhaps the use was a bit more tenuous in terms of what the, the terms of the will set out. It did seek some guidance from the AG's office. You have those same options available to you here.
Okay, thanks so much.
Roxanne.
Yes. So Kevin, are you planning, if you go back to the AG's office, are you gonna, what kind of questions would, or what kind of things would you pose to them? Because, you know, I also would want to know affordable housing and can we do something also for our older residents that are really struggling right now to keep their homes and, you know, maybe at a certain, um, you know, level of income that they would qualify for, for some things. And we really don't have much in town for that age for those kinds of issues. So I'd like to see if that question can also be asked.
Can I frame this, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, Roxanne. In my mind, affordable housing, are those eligible for affordable housing? Is that where you're going? So that one is affordable housing as we are familiar with it and what you're introducing is elderly, it may be more than just elderly, uh, could be somebody with disabilities, et cetera.
Yes.
Who would fit the, um, affordable housing criteria?
I think that's another category that we should really investigate because we really don't have much in town for that. So I would love to see at least that we investigate if that could be a possible use, if other members think that's, agree with that.
Erin.
So I just wanted to point out that we, we do have a, a lot of, um, housing for our elderly. There's the Equity House. Do you, you'd, I can't ever say it, but it's downright on the line with Matapan. It's a giant senior housing facility. I go there all the time. Unquity House. I go there all the time. Um, there is Winter Valley. There is, um, obviously Deborah Felton's, um, place over there. And again, I'm sick. I'm really sorry. I cannot remember things right now. But I know that one of the things that we talked about at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, the one of the ones I went to, was that it, this item about whether or not it should be age restricted came up. And that really, that's really something that the Affordable Housing Trust would have to put out with the RFP and what that would look like. So I just think, you know, there are other places in town. There's not really any places that have just low income housing. We don't have a lot of apartment rentals here in town. We don't have a lot of, um, two-family places here in town. Um, well, we do, but it's in one specific precinct. So I just, I, I mean, I think as we move forward with this, we just need to keep in mind that affordability, another affordability housing for 65 and up. I'm just curious about whether or not that would be in the best interest of the town and making it affordable for people to come to.
Roxanne.
Hi, um, I'd like to comment on that a little bit because I'm a little bit familiar with that. So Fuller Village is not considered affordable. Okay? People that have moved into Fuller Village, I don't even know if they have any affordability over there. Winter Valley has maybe, I don't even know if Winter Valley does. Unquity, I'm not sure of, but I can tell you from meetings with seniors, many of them have told me they're on waitlist for some of these places and, and they can't even afford some of these places. So I'm a little bit concerned. I, I think that's a misconception and I wouldn't want people to think that, you know, some of these places have affordability when they don't. So I'm certainly interested in, you know, looking at all of our prospects. And, um, we, you know, we have people with disabilities and, and they don't have anywhere either. So I think it's a little, um, I think it's important that we investigate that. Thank you.
Richard.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Now, these are in my final comments and I'll, oh, but but our role here is Governor Stone trustees to try to do what we can for Milton. The only three things that I want to mention here, and I go back historic and I hear everyone like history could be true. That's why I asked Kevin, like, I mean, I've sat in meetings with Joanna, with Mary, I've listened to this for as long as I can remember. So again, I just want to reiterate, I think we need to be really specific. I hear Mike's point about just doing it on Russell shoe, we can do that. Kevin, I think you should look at the file. There are some things in there going back to the initial approval 44 years ago from the AG that approve of that dog pound to be put there. That was, and we're not 44th years since that happened. I do know that there were approvals, that they did approve things like the food pantry and they, and, um, the Milton Residence Fund, those are all, there's, there's some documentation with all those, those all met the needs. And I think for those of us who've been here that have funded these in the past, um, those are all good things. But again, I reiterate, given the history that I know of, I would feel much more comfortable with if, if the milk, I mean, Julie knows, going back to when they wrote that initial 2.5 million dollar letter, like, be specific, show how you're going to meet these. And if they can do that, I think we have the best chance of not just doing it once, but creating a path forward in the same manner as we do with the food pantry, the Milton Residence Funds, things of that nature. That's, that's just, that's my final comment. And I just think Kevin, you should take a peek because John Flynn, as you know, spent yeoman's hours working on this for the past four decades. Thanks. That's it, Mr. Chair. I'm ready. It's 10:15 and Mr. Zulus has definitely passed that hour.
Right.
So, so some may need the, the comfort of, of the Attorney General's Office to say what for the poor means in the will. I think as, as I said before, as trustees, we have to make that judgment and that determination. I've made that judgment and that determination. I think affordable housing is for the poor. And to your point, Roxanne, I think affordable housing for seniors is for the poor. I think affordable housing for those who are disabled is for the poor. And all of those things would be covered. And, 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 uh, and that we have, and we have the, the opportunity as affordable house, as Governor Stoughton trustees, sorry, we have the opportunity, uh, to try to help those in need by using the funds in that way. So my view is that affordable housing for, for all of those groups, all of those, uh, individuals would be covered by using the funds for the poor. Uh, and that we have the, the opportunity to do so.
Would it make sense, if I may ask, for a, a resolution to this, to the effect of this discussion with the specificity that's been cited and Richard has recommended for us to review and then act on up or down? Kevin, does that resonate at all? I think that the, the thing that's compelling my thinking is the need for an action to be taken by the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust. And would that be a way in which we could take the action?
Yes, I think that the, I think that this, the trustees can, they, they can certainly act. However, they feel they should in accordance with their obligations as trustees. That's what the trustees are there for. Right? So that's up, that's up to the trustees to do now. And if you, you know, if you want the advice of town council on the, the, the appropriateness of those actions under the terms of the trust, town council's office is available to you and there are other resources that are also available to the select board as trustees.
I, I think we have a leaning to go in the direction of action. And, um, it would seem in order to do that, in good conscience, we have to have something to look at that we would, uh, vote on one way or the other, if it receives a motion in a second. Is that something that could be framed, uh, Kevin, for the select board to look at based upon the content of this conversation?
I'll look at anything. I just gave, I've already weighed in on what I think they should do, knowing what I know of the history, having been involved in this in so many ways for so many years. If John Cronin were alive, I know what he'd say to me tonight. He would say, be cautious with this. I, I know how hard he worked. I mean, he spent 40, like 30, 40 years of his whole life trying to do this and couldn't. And it was roadblock after roadblock. And like, and I'm like, you actually almost had me thinking around like, let's make a motion to put the 300,000. But then I'm thinking of what the penalties would be if we're wrong. So I think we should be cautious on it.
I think, I think, I think, Richard, you can make that motion. Once we find out the amount of the interest income, you can make and, and set aside some for the food pantry and the Milton Residence Fund and then make a motion for the overage. You don't need to do it tonight. We need to get the number nailed down. But, but, because I, I don't think 300,000 is the number because we've lost interest income based on the market.
Right, right.
So I think the number there. Anyway, sorry, sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I had a related conversation on this very point with Jim McCullough on the 23rd of September. And it was his judgment at that time that we had $123,000 in discretionary monies as of 6:30. And that he would take a look at, uh, what might be available as soon as he has the, uh, end of September court levy report, which would be just about now.
Mr. Chair, just one more point for Mr. Milano before we leave tonight. If you've been following the news, uh, you know, the predictions are that housing oil and the price of fuel is going to be dramatically increased this winter. I do not believe, we've heard from the Mount Residence Fund yet for this year. So I'm sure we're going to be, if maybe Nick or Amory can make the introduction tomorrow for Nick. So, um, he can meet and, and, uh, actually I'll even do it for you, Nick. I'll call her and do it. We can maybe get her in at our next meet and get some type of idea of what she's going to need this year.
Erin.
To that point that Richard just brought up, the feds are right now in the process of raising the cap on that, Richard, so that more of our households will be eligible for LIHEP, which is something that I work with to help our residents here in Milton apply for. So, um, so more of the residents, more people across the Commonwealth will be able to apply for LIHEP to get that fuel assistance for them because of this. So just know that that's also happening, Richard.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to a adjourned.
Second.
Moving to the second, did? Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle. Thank you, everyone, for patience and great contributions.
Good night.
Good night, Lynn. Thank you for your support.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Sean.